Okay.
Whatever you want, Dan.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, June 10th at 7:05 PM. The first agenda item is a public hearing for McIntyre Materials, Inc., case number 2020-02, 470 Northeast Main Street, Douglas. The following was posted in the town hall as well as advertised in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, and it read as follows. "The Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, June 10th, 2020, in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 19...29 Depot Street, Douglas." "The public hearing for McIntyre Materials has filed for a special permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 9.3, Appendix A, Section C.1, Retail Establishment for Sale of Merchandise in an industrially-zoned district for a wholesale of construction and landscape materials facility." The property is located at 470 Northeast Main Street, Assessors Map 140, Parcel 9. Does the applicant like to make their presentation? You're welcome to come up. I guess we need to be six feet apart. Are you welcome to bring your chairs up closer?
Hi, I'm Tom McIntyre. I'm going to lead the presentation. Although I'm remote, please let me know if you can't hear me or if I need to speak up or anything. Is my volume good right now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Joining me are John Palmer. I think he's present. He's the president of McIntyre Materials. And Dan McIntyre, our engineer. I'm not sure if he's there in person.
Tom here.
Oh, perfect, all right. So I'm the manager of KTKT, which is the landowner. I'm also here for McIntyre Materials. As stated elsewhere in the presentation, John will fill in on details where needed. So as you state, we're here for both a special permit and a variance on our industrial zone land in Douglas.
If I could interrupt you for a minute? This hearing is strictly about the special permit. We have another hearing about the variance after this.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Yes.
If it's convenient for the applicant, I would suggest that you open both hearings. A lot of the information's probably going to be the same.
Cross over.
And therefore, you know, just to consolidate things, open both at the same time, and then they do one presentation that addresses both the issues, and then you can make two separate decisions and close both separately.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Mr. McIntyre.
Do you want to hold?
Okay, so I will just give a little bit of background.
Do you need to open a second?
Open a second one, dear.
Okay, yeah, I'll let you open.
Yeah, well, okay.
There'll be background. Apple, quote, unquote, both.
Okay. So the second public hearing for McIntyre Materials is case number 2020-03, 470 Northeast Main Street, Douglas. And I will read this. "The Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM Wednesday, June 10th, in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass., to hear the following application. A public hearing for McIntyre Materials who's looking for a variance, is asking for a variance for the relief for frontage, four feet for side yard setback, which is required 15, and relief of 12 feet from the 15-foot, 150-foot frontage requirement. The property is located at 470 Northeast Main Street, Assessors Map 140, Parcel 9. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment. Any person interested or wishing to be heard regarding the matter should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of this application is available for review at the Community Development Office during regular business hours." This was advertised in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette on May 27th and June 3rd. Okay, Mr. McIntyre, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property at issue is 67 acres in total. Fifty of those acres are in Douglas, seventeen in Oxbridge. Two companies use the lot, McIntyre Loom, Inc., and McIntyre Materials. McIntyre Loom uses about 48 acres in the Douglas portion, which uses for storage, distribution, and wholesale primarily to large contractors. Materials uses the two acres nearest Northeast Main Street for distribution, storage, wholesale to small contractors, and if this special permit is granted, retail sales. Really, I wanted to lay out that background, but really, we're talking about the two-acre portion on Northeast Main Street. And again, this just goes in the background. The property is really set up this way with safety mines. Given the nature of the business, we have moving materials, trucks, et cetera. So when you enter the site off of West Hartford Ave, Oxbridge, obviously, is the material area. It's screened by a currow, it's a significant drop in elevation. Just to set up for safety reasons so that when people come in, specifically, you know, the retail, the retail person, the homeowner, when they come in, they don't see the heavy equipment operation down below. Because McIntyre Loom is a relatively active pit with heavy equipment, we limit that to wholesale, large contractors. So we're sure the only people to go into that area are truckers that are familiar with that sort of operation and know what to look out for.
So just to interrupt, let me just... What Tom's talking about is, this is, the road out here, it's kind of a pork-chop lot. The McIntyre Loom Company is the large operation out back. Tonight, we're talking about just this two-acre parcel near the road for the McIntyre Materials, which is what, the blow-up of what you have on the paper here. Go ahead, Tom.
Yes, and I'm sorry. So it just, right, goes to the background of why we have it set up this way, and why we're talking about just those upper two acres. But anyways, that's why we're here, seeking the special permit. To have retail sales in the industrial zone, we get a special permit, and we think the factors set forth in the bylaws favor or grant the permit. We would like, we sell to small contractors, but we'd like to sell to retail homeowners as well. Having it in this area is the, we think, the best spot for it. Retail sales of this type are best done, I think, in industrial zone. I'd be happy to run through the factors of the special permit, but they're laid out in our petition, so I'm happy to do that if the board would like, but if you have to open up to questions, that's fine, too.
Yeah, why don't you do a quick run-through for us, please?
Okay, sure. So I'll just run through the factors that are set forth in the zoning bylaws. So traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. There would be no changes in traffic pattern. There's already no curb cuts needed. More than adequate parking, given that the parcel is effectively 60 acres. There's plenty of parking near the trailer for the homeowners, and loading spaces would be done in the center of the yard, and we think it's set up for a safe operation of that loading yard. The next factor, social, economic, and community needs. We think our products are in demand in the area. They are largely beautification products, used to support things, you know, that lead to beautification around town, like grass, stone walls, planting beds. Landscapers are a heavy portion of our business. Utilities at the next... This use has no impact on public services, in my mind. The only utility we have on-site is electric. There's no gas, water, or sewer. We use portable restrooms. We have an irrigation well on-site that keeps the dusts down. The impact on emergency services like police and fire and ambulance, no more than would be expected currently, which is almost, you know, unlikely that we'd need those anyways, but it's not going to be a greater impact. Neighborhood character is the next factor. The site historically is a gravel pit. I think that it goes back into the 50s and 60s. It's always been a gravel pit. It's long been zone-industrial. The Douglas Abutters to our west are also zone-industrial, and our operation fits aesthetically with that. The Abutter to the east is the former Edgewood Golf Course. But the Oxbridge berm on the eastern portion of the lot really pretty much screens that out. The Abutters to the south is a development in Oxbridge, Columbia, and Grove Street, but the, as you see, there's a hill on the southern Douglas portion that really screens that out. And that's a natural hill with natural vegetation. Hasn't been touched in probably decades. Next is impact on the natural environment. There's nothing impervious that we're putting here, no paving, no, no land here needed. We don't see this as any greater impact on the environment than the property's current use. Finally, is the potential fiscal impact. As mentioned, there's no adverse impact on town resources. I think that having this type of operation in Douglas is a public good, though not a driver of revenue. It impacts the town positively, you know, with this. Those are the factors, and again, I think, just put it this way, when the bylaws talk about retail sales, I don't think they're thinking about retail sales of this type of material, you know, loom, gravel, bark mulch, fill. This is the spot, an industrial zone spot is where this sort of retail operation makes sense. It wouldn't make sense in any of the other zones where retail may be committed by rights. If Dan or John has anything to add in, I'd be happy to have them.
Guys, open the floor to questions.
Yeah, you covered it pretty well.
Okay. Are there any board members that have questions for the applicant? Mike?
Yeah. Both that gentleman and this one behind me both referred to a two-acre parcel, but you only have 38,000 here, and in your narrative, it says one acre. Where's the two acres?
So I was referring to the portion, you know, I'm going to call this the pork chop lot, and I was referring to the bonefish pork chop.
At the very end of the page.
As we put it on the drawing.
Which is this?
Action area that will be used is one acre. And that's what will be used for what is being used to materials.
Right. Just for clarity, your application says 38,000 square feet on page two. The plan says 38,000, and the narrative says one acre. So I just wanted to make sure that I was clear as to what you were talking about with the two acres. But we're talking about the 38,000 square foot area, correct?
Correct.
Yes, yes. My apologies.
No, no, I just, it's just clarity, that's all. What the application says, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what you want.
The, I think the two acres refers, the one acre or 38,000 is the area that we're currently using. Oxbridge in the front section increases that whole front area.
Oh, no, I get all that. But what we're discussing tonight is just the 38,000 square feet.
Correct.
I have one other thing, Dan.
Yes, go ahead.
Because we have two hearings open, but we're discussing the first one.
Correct.
As part of this application, he's referring to the storage bins that we're discussing in the second one, so how do we handle that if this isn't voted on favorably? Do you include that storage bin, or how do you handle that? Because that's something that's going to be talked into the next hearing, unless you have an answer for it.
Would you like me to just sort of give the presentation on the next part of the hearing? It can be discussed.
Sure. Yes, please. Go ahead, Mr. McIntyre.
Okay, so, yeah, the second part of the hearing is for a variance for side yard relief, and also for frontage, and I'm just going to take them one at a time. The side yard relief is because, as you pointed out, the plans, those bins that are shown on the plan, they are 11 feet from the lot line. I want to raise one point that I didn't raise in my writing, more to preserve the argument than to, you know, press it all the way, but I was looking at the definition of the bylaws in preparation for this meeting, and the town's bylaw defines side yard as a yard situated between the nearest point of the building and the sideline of the lot. I'm going to emphasize that that says the nearest point of the building. Doesn't say anything about structures, just buildings. The storage bins are structures, but they're not buildings under the bylaws' definition, so I'd like to just start with the argument that perhaps even a side yard variance isn't required, because if you're going to measure from the trailer, it's more than, way more than 15.
We need a definition of structure.
I have it right here. Go ahead, continue.
I have your answer question on that. I just wanted to raise that, to preserve it.
No, we're not, the bins are structures, there's no argument out there. What we're saying is the definition of side yard.
Yeah, I understand.
Of structures, they're called, they're called buildings.
I understand.
Yeah.
Mike?
Comment on that?
No, a variance is required. I just wanted to raise that, to preserve it.
Yep. No, I get that, but the definition unfortunately classifies the bin as a structure, so now once it's determined a structure, now you can take that, in my mind, consider it something else, once it's determined as a structure.
Do we have a written definition?
So the bin is considered a structure, so I just want to, I understand what you said as far as building and the lot, I get all that, but unfortunately, they call the bin a structure. Because I purposely looked into that myself to make sure, because I didn't even think it was a structure.
Right.
But in our definitions, it calls it a structure, so now it's a structure.
I can read "structure." I was just making the point that the definition of side yard says to the nearest point of the building, not, doesn't say anything about structures.
I'll just read the definition of a structure out of the zoning bylaws. Says, "A structure is a combination of materials assembled at a fixed location to give support or shelter, such as a building, framework, retaining wall, tent, viewing stand, platform, bin, fence, sign, flagpole, recreational tramway, or a mask for a radio antenna or the like." So a structure is a...
Oh, right.
A bin is a structure.
Right. So that's what my point is, is now it's put into that category so it could easily be converted to a different type of structure.
Yep.
But the definitions in the bylaws define building and structure differently. So you have two different types of things here, and the side yard definition only refers to one of those buildings, not structures.
There you go.
This is like role reversal. You're taking my position now. I'm advocating that you're making a building. You're saying, no, I can't.
I'm starting to mean down. I really just want to...
No, but you understand what I mean. I'm not trying to be stupid. Just want, again, just for clarity, to make sure we understand what we're talking about, that's all.
Yep. So let me get to the actual request for a variance, looking at the soil conditions, shape of the lot, topographical conditions, et cetera. Here, we're talking about the shape of the lot and topographical conditions. As I already mentioned at the top, the name of the game for us is safety. We want to make sure the yard is adequate width so that the customers that come in can be loaded safely. Queues don't build up, and people can actually maneuver in there. And that just, you know, I'm just going to take you across the lot east to west. So you see the lot line, the first thing that you see is there's a gas pipeline running more or less along the eastern edge of the property, with the company easing. That pipeline is an elevated, that pipeline is an elevated hill. So we really can't dig into that hill. That hill is where it is. So... I'm sorry, I'm just getting a little bit of feedback. So that hill is where it is. That dictates where the driveway in goes, and that's about as eastern most on the lot as we can do. And then the driveway needs to be sufficient width for two lanes of truck traffic, and that's what the driveway is. And then that leads us to essentially the building. So we took that eastern row of bins and the trailer just to the west of the driveway, and that pushed, you know, basically, the pipeline pushes everything west, and that's why we need those four feet. That's the topographical condition that's unique to this site and not affecting the zoning district generally. The hardship is that if we had to push the bins back a little bit, we really feel like we would compromise safe operation of the yard. And just a couple other points. The neighbor to our west, Mr. Matthew, has written a letter supporting this application. It's part of the record that we submitted. He's in favor of the side yard variance. And one other thing to point out, when it comes to the purpose of, you know, the purpose of the side yard variances is to make sure that there's adequate space between any of the buildings that are, that may be put there. Mr. Matthew's lot is burdened by a 20-foot easement on his eastern portion, the lawn that abuts us. So with that 20 feet, you know, because of the easement, he can't, he can't put anything, he can't put a building there. With our of being 11 feet off the lot line, we're just by necessity going to be 31 feet apart, no matter what, because of that easement. And, you know, that is more, even one foot more than what you would be if everyone pushed right up to the 15-foot limit. So, I mean, the underlying purpose of the side yard is satisfied.
So I have a question about the easement.
You have any question on that, or would you like me to go on with the frontage portion?
Whoever member that has a question.
I have a question on the easement. I know it's not on your property, but it's on the Abutters' property. What is that for? Should we know about that?
I don't think it's necessarily an underlying purpose, but I, just looking at the property records, I know that it is an access that the prior owner or a prior owner of that lot reserved a gravel removal easement towards the north portion of the lot, and the 20 feet on the east is to be able to access that gravel removal easement.
Thank you.
It's not an easement for us. We're not a beneficiary of that.
No, I know, but what I wanted to make sure that it wasn't some sort of a safety issue, another gas line or whatever.
It's an access. Yeah, no, it's just an access easement.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Is that gas pipeline still in use?
Yes.
It is, really?
That's a pipeline.
That's okay.
Is that Tanico? No, Tanico?
Yes.
Thanks, Louie.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
On what? On this or the whole thing?
Or any part of it, yeah.
Oh, I'd like to know about your hours of operation for your commercial business and what your proposed hours of operation are for this.
I think it was in the application.
Yeah.
Was it? Sorry.
It was in the narrative somewhere.
Yeah.
I believe in the application, we wrote 7:00 AM to 5:00, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 7:00 to 3:00 on Saturday, but in actuality, it's 7:00 to 4:00, 4:30 during the week, and noon on Saturday.
And Saturday is the week during the, essentially, the spring and summer months.
So it's Saturday hours, place following.
I mean, I am concerned about the residences that have popped up up there, you know, for years, nothing, and then, and now, and now we've got another, another small cul-de-sac going up also, so I'm worried about traffic noise, et cetera, for residential area, which happens to abut you, the way it is.
Luckily, that natural hill in the front of our property with, you know, mature trees screens us very, very well from that development that's just being put in there. We can't see it, they can't see us.
Right.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
On the storage, we're only talking about the storage bins for the variance, correct?
I think so.
Yes.
Yeah.
There was, I'm sorry, there was some mention that I heard about whether or not some buildings would be there at all, or?
No, I think all we're hearing is a variance on the storage.
We have a, an office trailer there.
Office trailer.
We call that, that's the principal building on the lot.
I see.
So the question I have is on your variance application and on the special permit application, you have a structure height of 12 feet. Those bins don't look like they're 12 feet, are they?
The trailer.
Trailers, 12.
We're not talking about the trailer. Are we? Are we talking about the storage bins with the 11-foot?
We are.
Okay, so I just want to clarify, because the application is for the storage bins, so the trailer really doesn't come into play until it does it. In what way? Well, what do we grant, we grant a variance on the trailer?
Well, I don't think we're asking for a variance on the trailer.
No, we're not.
No, it's the storage.
So I just want to know what that 12-foot was for, for the storage bins, because that's what we're applying for.
It was the space on your application, and we filled it out.
I did the application myself, and when I did it...
So how high will these storage bins be?
The tallest ones are eight feet.
So do we want to modify that to eight feet per height, or you want to leave them at 12 feet per height? Because we're talking, the variance is for storage bins, so I just want to...
The variance is for side yard. We're not imposing the height on the side.
Excuse me for a minute. The variance is for the location of the storage bins from the sideline.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Correct.
But the application says 12 feet for the height. Do we want to leave that at 12 feet, or do we want to modify that to the height that they actually are? Or what does the applicant have to say?
Actually, whoa, you're on that. There seems to be a conflict here, too. On the application for the special permit, it says the side yard requirement is 15, and you're providing 11. But if you go on to another, several pages in, it says, it says, "In conclusion, owing to the unique shape and topography of the land, literally and enforcement, literal enforcement would cause a hardship that would compromise safe operation of the materials' yard. Therefore, we seek a side yard variance of 11 feet, so the storage bins may be placed four feet from the property's west, westerly lot line." So...
That's a typo. We'd like to correct that on the record if we could.
Yeah.
So you're, you're looking for four feet of relief, or you're looking for 11 feet of relief?
Four, yes.
Four. As it says uneven, and the plan says 11 on the end.
Yeah, so if you look at page two of their attach, attachment to McIntyre application for zoning variance, page two, halfway down, it says, you've seen it, it says, "The four-foot variance, therefore, remaining 11 feet in its western lot line."
Right. But right here, on the other paperwork they submitted, it says that it's, that the bins would be within four feet of the westerly property line.
Okay.
If I may, if I may make a correction.
Go ahead.
Dan was right, that's a typo, but you're, you're looking at the special permit application. When we submitted the special permit, we did not, we were not aware there was a separate petition for the variance, so you're actually looking at an attachment of the special permit.
I'm looking at a variance application.
You will see that we corrected that in that same sentence, "In conclusion, owing to the unique shape and topography of land," we corrected it to say we seek a side yard variance of four feet, so that the storage bins may be at least 11 feet from the lot line.
So Mr. Chairman, in the very end, we refer...
The actual petition for the board is the correct statement. The one in the, the one attached to the special permit, we apologize for that.
We refer to the plan.
And the plan is 11 feet?
It says 11, so that's really the plan. It's an easy fit.
The one that I signed a couple different times. The sign, whatever signature it is, it's, the first one was a special permit, the second one would have been a variance.
So anyways, in the variance application, it is correct the way he just described it.
Okay.
Excuse me?
Go ahead, Lou.
What are we doing here that's different than what you're doing?
Nothing.
What are we here for?
Selling to retail customers.
Yeah.
For what?
Selling to retail customers.
We have a special permit to sell to retail customers.
Okay, it's not, oh, okay, okay, so it's just for sales, more likely, right?
Yeah.
And you've been doing them anyways, right?
We sell to wholesale customers.
Yeah, yeah, well, you sell, right? And there's been no problem there.
There's no...
I mean, I go by it 100 times a day, and I've never heard nothing about it. I mean, you run a lurid, good operation, clean operation, keep the road nice and clean out there. I really don't see nothing wrong with it.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
Actually, I... Actually, I don't, I don't think we zeroed in on everything, and again, we can refer to the plans in front of us, and if we're gassing it up feet on the rest of it, Mike.
So, so just, we leave in the height of the storage bins at 12 feet? I don't have a problem with it, I'm just making sure that we're clear, because they said that they were referring to the trailer, so that 8 feet, 12 feet, make those, because that would leave an amount.
Yeah, and if I could, I would like to leave it at 12 feet, only because we are somewhat estimating the height of the bins, I'd hate to have them be 8.3 feet or something like that.
You get three rocks over the limit, you know.
No rocks on the top.
Yeah.
All right, we'll leave at 12 feet.
So I think 12 feet will cover us.
Apparently, the bins along that property line are 4 feet high. The ones that are along the front of the property, note these main oval molds, they're taller, they're eight, maybe 10 feet tall, but they do stretch one block width wide to that property line. So, but the majority of the blocks that flow along our westernmost property line are 4 feet high.
So, Mr., may I ask a question?
Go ahead, Pam.
What, how much, how much material will each of these bins hold?
Approximately, in those bins along that property line, the ones that we're talking about, approximately 25 to 30 yards, depending on the product, the material, how it stacks, in each bin.
And you don't think that you're going to have any queuing problems or anything on traffic and whatever on the road? Obviously, the road is, the road is the road, can't widen that too much.
The access to the gravel pit out back comes in from our main gate and continues straight. The only way to get material from this property is to turn in, or from this yard is to turn in, and everything's handled inside the bins instead of out in the road. So, that's why we stretched it as wide as we could, because any loading of these materials is inside facing bins.
There's going to be no queuing whatsoever onto the public way.
Okay.
That's for certain, Mark, that just can't happen given the length of distance.
Okay.
No drive-through window?
Maria, did we get the certified mail back from the abutters?
Yeah.
We did, okay. All right. Anyone have any other questions?
I'm good.
Comments?
I don't think planning board had any objections.
No, we did have communication with the planning board that they were.
They're good.
In favor of both the variance and a special permit.
Do they have to do a site plan review on this, or no?
I don't know, Bill, would they have, a site plan review be required?
Well, I would put the question to the applicant, are they planning on filing with site plan review? They're already there, though, that's all right. Everything's already there, if you know what I mean. I would put the question to the applicant.
Yeah. Is that your intent, to file for site plan review?
If that's what's required, we will do it. I don't think we need to, I don't think we should require a site plan review, but if that is what the town thinks needs to be done, we will, we will get that done.
There's only a question for my part, I have no idea if he means or not.
At this time, I'm not doing it.
So we could put.
Instead of planning board, it made me think of.
Anyone else?
I did not address the frontage. If you would like me to, I'm happy to do it, but I'm just happy to rely on the written materials before the board, or, or answer any questions about the frontage.
Yeah.
Just if you'd like.
No, I, I read it, and I think it's pretty self-explanatory about the.
I have no question.
Frontage. All right. All right. I don't have any other, so anybody in the room who would like to speak on this, other than people have? No, okay, all right.
I'll make a motion to, I guess we're going to close the public hearing on both?
Yes.
Take a roll call vote on each of them.
Second.
Okay, we're going to give you the case numbers, okay? It's 202002.
Separately, Bill?
202003.
Close them separately.
Close them separately.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, the first one then, 202002.
The second.
Okay.
Okay, we have.
Pam Holmes, aye.
John Bombara, aye.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to close the public hearing.
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed.
Do you need a sit?
Aye, Dan Heaney.
Need a roll call vote.
Okay. All right, aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, John Bombara.
Aye, Louis Tiziano.
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
Pam Holmes, aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed.
So, we want to do the second one now?
Yeah, we can close them both.
Are you one of them?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, 202003, close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mrs. Holmes, to close the public hearing for 202003. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, John Bombara.
Aye, Louis Tiziano.
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
Pam Holmes, aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed.
So, we want to do the second one now?
Yeah, we can close them both.
Are you one of them?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, 202003, close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mrs. Holmes, to close the public hearing for 202003. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, John Bombara.
Aye, Louis Tiziano.
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
Pam Holmes, aye.
Okay, the second public hearing is now closed. Okay. Does the board like to move forward with a decision tonight?
I don't see why not.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I'll make the first motion on the 202002.
For the special permit?
Yes, this is the top one, yeah. Special permit on 202002, that we approve the special permit.
Second.
Okay, we have a, approval with conditions?
With, okay, I'm sorry, with conditions, is the special permit for this.
Referencing the map?
Yeah, reference the map that's dated.
Plan.
Okay, thank you, Cam.
Can we add an ad submitted for the parcel B 38,903 square foot area?
Yes.
I'll second the elongated motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mrs. Holmes, to approve the special permit request. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, Dan Heaney.
Okay, aye, John Bombara.
Aye, Louis Tiziano.
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
Pam Holmes, aye.
Okay, so the special permit request is approved, subject to conditions. And the next case?
Go ahead.
Oh, what am I, what am I doing? What am I doing?
202003.
Go ahead. I'll move that we, that we approve the case number 202003 at 470 Northwest Main Street, McIntyre Materials, for a variance to 11 feet on the westerly side of the.
Storage bins.
And the storage bin, the 12-foot, for 12-foot storage bins, 12-foot, 12-foot high storage bins.
And they're also looking for a variance on the lack of frontage.
Yeah.
And, right, and the, the frontage grant them a variance of, what was the number on that?
I think they have 138.
They needed four feet or 12 feet? 12-foot. Was it anybody?
12.15 feet.
Okay. 12.15 feet, then, so be it. Anyway, so the motion's been made to approve it.
We have a motion by Mrs. Holmes.
Follow that.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bombara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, John Bombara.
Aye, Louis Tiziano.
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
Pam Holmes, aye.
Okay.
Do we also reference the 38,000 square foot parcel?
Plan.
Plan.
Okay, that passed motion.
That's dated 31620.
Yes.
So the variance is for 11-foot setback on.
Yep, parcel B.
Yes, 38,000 square foot law area, I should say, and then the lack of frontage variance as well.
Correct.
Okay. All right, special permit variances are granted, we will get the decisions drafted and get them to the town clerk as soon as possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did they know about the appeal period?
Yeah, there's a 20-day appeal period once it's, once it's submitted to the town clerk.
Thank you for coming to our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You messed up my papers, look.
Oh, yes, here we go.
Okay.
Who's that just? Who's that guy popped in your mic?
Yeah.
I thought so. He left.
Just so you know, Mark is now the.
Maybe he'll be back, yeah, here he is. No?
Capable.
Oh, okay.
Who?
Mark. You got lucky.
910, okay. All right, the next order of business is a public hearing for Rebecca Laramie, case number 2020-04, 17 Huff Road. This was advertised in the Telegram and Gazette, and. Thank you, Cam.
You're welcome.
And it was also posted at the town hall, and it read as follows, "The Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 7:15 on Wednesday, June 10, in the Douglas Municipal Center, Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass., to hear the following application. Public hearing for Rebecca Laramie, who has filed for a special permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 9, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 3.4.3, non-conforming structures to expand their roof over an existing patio. The property is located in a rural agricultural RA zone district at 17 Huff Road, assesses map 111, parcel 41. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the opportunity for public comment. A copy of the application may be viewed in the community development department during regular business hours. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated. It was advertised in the Telegram and Gazette on May 27 and on June 3." The applicant present?
Yes.
Okay.
Rebecca Laramie.
All right. Great. Okay, the floor is yours.
I am just asking for permission to make my roof over my picnic table better. So, I provided, like, way a lot of stuff, I'm not really sure exactly. I provided a plot plan, I provided fancy, big fancy pictures of what the structure will look like, because it doesn't have walls, so it needs to be reached, it has to be very, I guess, structurally sound. So I had an engineer draw the photos to specs for the town's requirements, and those are also part of the application, as well as even all the stuff that Maria did for the abutters, that's part of the application. I do have a plot plan in there that I had done right after my in-laws had passed away. We were lucky enough to take the house over, so I had plot plan drawn up, and that's the first one. And then the next one under that is where the, he's the plot plan guy, called it a cabana, I just call it a roof, but you can call it anything you'd like, as long as you call it, good to go. So, so he's calling it a cabana, I, I had used his plot plan and had another engineer, just a friend of mine, draw on the second page where the new cabana, or restructured cabana would be, so. It's still in the same area, we spoke with Steve, Zis came out, he measured everything, it's still, I don't, you know, he gave me a letter saying, "We're all good to go." But it's in the same spot, it's just, I took away some junk, and I just have legs now. So I used to have a big fire pit with a battery-operated motor, and it turned chicken spit, and it had deteriorated over time, and it was right, right on the property line, and we removed the chicken spit and just continued, you know, the patio just stayed underneath it. So, it's, it's a bunch of, the roofs were like two different roofs, and then a shed next to it, and it just, I mean, it was my in-laws, they, over time, had just kind of, you know, built up stuff, they bought the property in early 40s, before it was even a lakefront, so it's just a current roof that I wanted to make better, and it was built at a time where there were no fancy picture stuff, so we're just, we're just doing it the right way to make sure it doesn't blow away. So, we're asking for permission to redo our roof.
And as well as expanding?
It's, it's shrunk one way and kind of, so we made it square instead of 33 feet long, we only made it 20 feet by 20, 20 by 24. So it used to be 33 feet long, very long and oblong, so we sort of kind of made it into a square instead of this big oblong thing.
Okay. On the proposed plot plan that you submitted, it.
Yes.
It does not have a measurement from the lot line, too, so is that?
That's 3 feet 2 inches. From, so we did move it away from the lot line a little bit, just because you had to be square. So 3 feet 2 inches is exactly where it was, the shed was before, but your other line, closer to the street frontage, is 5 feet, and that is the line that used to be 3 feet. We moved it more towards us instead of towards Stewie. So one foot, one is 3 feet 2 inches, and the other one is 5 feet.
Right, just so, the rear.
3 feet 2.
Portion is 3 foot 2?
Yes, sir.
And, okay. Is that information you got from an engineer, or is that just your own measurements, or?
There's a pipe right, right beside it.
The lot line pipe?
I measured it before I drew, had the engineer draw the pictures.
Yeah, it shows one right next to the shed, and that.
Yep. The pipe's still there, because it was just surveyed in 2016.
And the front is 5 feet from the sideline?
Correct. That one did, that one did get further away from, from Mr. Snow's yard.
Okay. All right, is, Maria, was it, was the certified mail sent out and received? Yeah, okay. All right. All right, we can open up the floor, any.
Planning board, did you read the planning board information?
I didn't, I didn't see one.
You can figure it out.
All right, we do have comments from the planning board, it reads, "We have no objection to the attached request for a special permit if extending the roof to the rear." Says, "We have an objection to the attached request for the following reasons. They will need more information," is what they're saying, so.
I don't know what that means.
I, yeah.
We're not.
Yeah.
I'm a rocket scientist, but I can't figure that one out, no. We're, we're not extending anything, we just kind of shrunk it down and squared it up. Like, the patio is always there. The patio is always there, the shed was always there. My husband's parents owned it since the 40s. He doesn't ever remember a time, he's 56, of the roof not being there. And we've been married 30 years, so the shed has been there for 30 years, so we already were there, we just want to make it better.
Yeah, I'm not sure the planning board had the certified plot plan.
They might not have, I didn't know, that's my...
That's why I was confused.
Yeah. I didn't know. I thought you wanted that big fancy picture, I paid all that money to have made, the big...
Where, where is it?
I got a whole bunch of them, I gave it to...
No, no, we haven't.
Oh, you haven't. It's shrunk, we shrunk it down, so it's in your folder.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, do you have any further, any questions for the applicant?
I do.
Go ahead, Mike.
Of course. I'm just trying to follow this. You have a shed?
Uh huh.
Well, you had a shed in a, a cabana, and I'm assuming that's a patio in front of it?
No, there's two roofs, two separate roofs.
So, that's a, that's a roof that goes all the way across?
Correct. And that, it just shows two sections, 'cause they're two separate roofs.
So, which one is here now? This here, or is this?
Both of them.
This square can't be here if this is here.
No, 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 that one's the previous.
This one?
Yep, previous.
That's before and after.
So, what is here now?
The, the, that one, yeah.
And what's over it?
Just the roof that we're asking permission for.
There's a roof over there now?
Well, just the remnants of it, we didn't build it yet.
I think what she's saying, like, is, you have a before and after.
Yeah.
And she doesn't, she doesn't do the after, yeah. So, this is before.
This is before, two separate roofs and a shed.
Two separate roofs on there.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
And now, this is what she wants to do.
That's the proposed one.
That's proposed, that's what she wants to do.
So, we shrunk the patio a little bit.
So, what is there now?
This one.
That's what I asked.
Okay.
She's saying that that's not there, that this isn't...
I got her.
This is here now, and there's a roof over it, that's what I'm trying to follow.
Yeah. She hasn't built anything yet, waiting for us to make a decision. Anybody else? No? You have anything else you want to add?
Uh, no, fine.
Okay.
Actually, you're just building a roof.
I'm just building a roof. Just to cover the...
Over my, over my cabana. Three feet from the lot line. Three foot, two.
Three foot, but it was always there, so...
Yeah, it looks...
It'll be prettier, it'll be much prettier than the nasty shed falling down, so...
So, you said this was 33 feet long, that's here now?
Correct, yep. The first...
And this is 20 feet now?
Yes, correct.
So, why'd you pull it off the son of the 13 feet? I'm just asking.
Just to make it shorter, I didn't want it 33 feet long.
Why didn't you pull it off the lot line?
My lot's only 50 feet wide, I...
Wait a minute. You're right here now.
Yep.
You went this way. Why didn't you go this way? And shorten it up this, to give, gave more space to the sideline. You're not going to get 25 feet, but if you're, if you're gonna...
'Cause I didn't...
Your overall footprint is 33 feet, and you're gonna get 20 feet, you're reducing it by 13 feet.
I did, yeah.
But you chose to push it towards the lot line instead of pulling it away from the lot line.
Correct.
To help the situation. Is there any particular reason for that?
Well, it's just, yeah, 'cause it looks better that way. It's more square, it just looks better.
But if it was square and it was moved further away from the lot line, that's because what Mike's saying.
It would still be square.
Yeah, it's square and you moved it...
But it wouldn't look good to me.
I'm sorry?
It wouldn't look good to me. So, if we're just, you know, we cut away the patio, we, I mean, one end or the other.
Yeah. But a, a special permit, a variance, should be kind of last resort, you should explore all the opportunity, what other, whatever other opportunities you may have. So, is there any reason where you couldn't pull it further away from the lot line? Keep it the same size, but move it further up?
Yeah, I, I just, I'm getting too close to the brook, I just can't go that way.
What's your brook?
There's a brook on this side of the property. See the, yeah, it says brook.
It does?
Bottom part of the paper.
Oh, yeah.
I can't, no, I mean... So, the other side is, is just Stewie's lot, and we went and talked to him about it and made sure he was, you know, the wife was like, "Oh, thank God, pull, pull down that nasty shed." But I'm very, very close to the brook, I think I'm only 35 feet from the brook, so I couldn't really...
So, you, you need to go to conservation?
I already, conservation already said, "We're good." I don't make it any bigger than what it is. I shrunk it down, I was in the same spot, I just, I just shrunk it down. And if anything, I moved off the lot line by two feet, 'cause I was three feet all the way down.
Yeah, but that was probably put there before zoning was in effect.
Correct. I mean, they, they bought the property in 1940s, and we have some crazy pictures.
No zoning at all then, yeah?
Right.
Yeah.
So, actually, there's, we'll call it a shed, that's actually three feet away, but this other structure that's right here, that was originally close.
On the line, it was like on the line.
So, this new one
Yep.
Is three feet, on the very end over here, you're up at five.
Correct.
You're telling me?
So, we pulled away from that end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as I've been here, we haven't done anything three feet from a lot line.
It was already there.
Yeah.
It's not the...
No, he's saying on new applications.
Oh, oh, oh.
He's not saying that it's not impossible for something to be...
Yeah, I mean...
There's been some weird things that have been over the lot line. That doesn't mean that it got approved.
Sure enough.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the size, but I'd like to see it moved towards the center of the lot.
I can't, I can't go that way. It's too close to the water. Steve came out and measured.
You said you went to conservation, did you go to that meeting, or did you just talk?
Steve came out and measured for me. I'm 110 from the waterfront, so I'm fine on the waterfront. I mean, it's already there.
110 from the waterfront, but from the...
But from there, I'm only, yeah, I'm only 35 feet, 'cause my whole property is only 50 feet wide.
Right, so this isn't a scale then?
And I'd still be way within, you know, special permit requirements.
94 in the front and 54 in the water.
I think three feet's too close personally, but that's just my opinion.
Mr. Snow had no issues with it. Mr. Snow, my, my neighbor has had no issues with it. It's much better, just one pole, instead of a big old nasty shed, you can, you'll be able to see...
There's no doubt you're improving
Yeah.
what's there.
Yeah.
The question is, it's three feet from the lot line, and...
But the lot's so tiny.
It doesn't really matter.
I understand that. But we've had a lot of people come in with tiny lots, and they were more than three feet away.
I'm hoping the board will see that it's...
So, right now, there's just, what is there, is that, is this, is the cement pad?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a patio.
Sure.
Yep, yeah.
So, you're not, you're using the existing pad?
Yep.
You're not increasing this?
Oh, no, we, we, we fixed it up a little bit, the, the pad, the cement stones, yeah, but it's still the same exact shape.
So, so, did you make it less, did you make it, give a little bit more space to the line, or is it at the same exact spot?
Well, it's, one corner's the same spot, and then it moved away from, 'cause there was a big, that big chicken spit there.
Okay.
Was like, probably like you just said, probably close to over line.
Okay.
So, we pulled it way back after the survey, we just didn't want to have any trouble.
Okay, so you're not, you're, you're less close to the, to the lot line?
I'm less than I was originally, correct.
So, that's a positive?
But it's not built yet.
Right.
Well, the patio is built.
The slab is there, I guess.
This is what I, this is what I was asking for.
Yeah, the patio's already there.
Yeah. All she wants is a roof.
The patio, yes.
The square.
But you can put a patio, you don't...
And there's no roof over it, no?
Uh, just a, some stick, yeah, no, there's no roof. But the patio is there, the patio's always been there. We just had a roof over, two separate roofs over it.
This shouldn't be that hard. This shouldn't be that hard.
No, I, I'm...
You know?
So, you're saying now that the, this, this new square, we have the after now, that square is already there, that, that patio is concrete in the ground?
Uh, yeah, it was always, always there, we just shrunk it.
I see, I see. So, now you want to put a roof over the top of it?
Correct.
And there were only, apparently you didn't have all of the square covered before, with the shed and cabana.
It was, yeah, it was 33 feet long before, two separate roofs.
So, what I'm...
One, one side of the pad over here, Pam, is five feet, and that very corner where that dart is, is three feet.
I guess...
But that's not a structure, that's a...
No, that's just a patio.
Excuse me, yeah. It's a patio, now we're talking about a structure.
What's confusing me is what appears to be, I guess this is the dwelling, the square?
Correct.
Yeah.
Is the same size on both of these pictures. The patio on this one has grown to almost the size of the dwelling, it's square. This one clearly is a rectangle, little bitty rectangle. How did, how did that change?
This isn't a picture of a patio.
Well, no, she said this was 37 feet long.
This is a picture of a roof. The patio doesn't show on a plot plan.
Oh, okay.
The patio, the patio comes out of the house and curves over to the roof area, like, the patio is, is not on this picture at all. This is just roof, that, that's all I'm asking for.
Would the board like to look through a site visit?
Probably.
Roof over a patio?
Huh? What'd you say, Mike? Bill?
Uh, Mark has a comment.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Hi, guys, can you get me?
Yes.
Sorry, here's the last one, I, I don't give you the password to get in. But I, I want to give you a little history on this property here. So, the reason this is before you is because I got a call from a neighbor, someone was building, building a project down there, went down there, there was no permit, so I issued a stop work order on this project. So, I don't know really what was there before, but what's there now, what, what she's describing, is up, incomplete. And when I was there, there was another roof section on the ground, which appeared to be a lot smaller than it is. So, that's a little background on it, so you guys know. It's up right now, it's not permitted right now.
And it's not done?
It's not done, it's not permitted either, and...
It's not done at all, it's just some, it's just some sticks over it.
To me, it, it could be, when I was there, it appeared to be a lot bigger than the old roof on the ground, but I, from what she explained to me, that it was there, showed me some pictures that looked like something was there, so I didn't really know what was there. So, that's why this is in front of you right now.
So, the footings and everything are already in the ground, Mark?
I don't know exactly what footings are in the ground, that's why I asked for some more information, I asked for engineering, because it was just, it was just four by four posts out of the ground with this roof on it. It wasn't, it wasn't plywood, you got it?
So, the roof is already in place?
Yes, the rafters were up, most of the rafters were up.
Not all of them, no. Yeah, we got some sticks over, I said we had some sticks over.
Well, they're called, they're called actually boards, probably two by fours or something.
Okay, boards, sticks, I mean...
Sticks is a little bit.
I do have pictures of the actual area, if you guys want to see the pictures of the actual area. So, this is, those are the roofs, one, two, shed.
That's an actual lot.
One, two, shed.
So, I also want to point out, this survey plan is a certified plot plan, and this is true and accurate, so it does show what used to be there from a plan view.
Okay, thank you.
So, these are just some pictures to prove that it was always there, I did send them to Mark.
So, I, I...
And you can see the patio.
...special permit, 'cause she's rethinking, basically, and altering what was there. I originally thought it was going to be a variance, 'cause I didn't think there was anything there, but then she showed me some pictures, but determined the size, so I really don't know. So, I think the old chart, she was like, "Now..."
Right.
It's very 14 feet wide, 30 feet long, yeah.
You have a picture of what's up now?
I don't have that.
What's this?
So, this is just the, this is the first roof, that's the second roof, this is the patio, so you can see the patio?
Is this up now?
No, this is the old stuff. See, the old shed is behind there. This is a grill, that black thing is a grill, but where that grill is, there used to be a fire pit here, and it was much further back, and we took that out. I didn't really have any good pictures of the fire pit, don't, don't laugh, but, except kind of in the background of a little kid picture, that fire pit.
It was made out of stone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This used to be, you can see how close to the tree it was, it was almost in Stewie's lot yard. So...
Looks like the tree survived the fire pit, huh?
So, this was the old fire pit?
Yeah.
But you can see how close, this is underneath this, that's where that is, right there, that's that one.
Yeah, thank you.
Pretty close to the property line.
And this is the fire pit we took down. This is sort of in, in this picture right here.
Yeah, women were interested in what you're proposing, not what was there.
Right.
Well, just to say that I, you know, Mark's saying that he didn't know what was there, this is proof that I was already in the same space.
Right, but you're here for what you're proposing, not for what was there.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to probably do a drive-by.
Yep.
I agree, so...
Well, all she did was, she put a roof over it, right? The roof was bad, and she added a roof.
Yeah.
You're close, almost, yeah, but it's very close to the lot line, Louis, so...
Yeah, but she could, she could also have, you know, she, I had a customer one time pour cement all over his grass, made it, his whole yard cement.
You do that in Florida, Louis, so you don't have to worry about it.
No, no, they do it here, too, I mean, that's what the guy wanted.
I think that would be a conservation issue, that wouldn't be for us.
Yeah.
Right, yes. Is that a, is that a motion, John?
Yes, I would do a drive-by.
Want me to continue?
Since we have the applicant here...
What you said?
Yeah, can we...
Can we get permission to?
Enter into the property.
And so, is that something that's, I mean...
Normal.
Normal.
Normal?
Yeah. I, I'll be honest, I, this is the first one I've never done, I mean, I usually, every single time, I drive to the property and look at it, and I did not, I wasn't able to, only because of what's been going on with the world today.
Sure.
So, anyway, I would like to...
Did I miss something?
You know, yeah, you did. So, I would still like to go down and take a look at it, it's on Huff Road, it's on the Manchuck's side of the pond, and I have a flat GMC pickup, that's, I'll just go down at my leisure, if that's okay?
Yeah, I really don't want you there, but...
So, you're asking us for something that you want?
Well, just, just because, you know, everyone's like giving me a hard time about, you know, you can't even put a roof over your patio, so I was hoping this was going to be a no, no issue thing, but...
You're three feet from the lot line, you're not even close to what's required.
Yeah.
Not even, not even remotely close.
I understand, I understand, you're already there.
You're not already there.
I understand.
I'm already there with the roof and building. Why would I, I just didn't think that was, because I had already occupied the space.
And it was, this isn't the roof you're putting up.
No, sir, that's the old roof.
That's the old...
So, that, that shed is exactly where I am.
July 8th is our next meeting.
Go ahead, Mike.
Are you building this yourself, or did you hire somebody to do it?
I have a...
If you want to continue this hearing, it's January 8th.
I hired someone to draw the picture. I hired someone to draw the picture.
No, 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 no.
And then we are building it also.
Without a building permit?
Well, I didn't really realize I needed one, so that's why we're here. Because someone came down and said, hey, you're not supposed to do this. So, then I went and, on Mark's requirement, I went and had an engineer draw fancy pictures, and the building...
It's not Mark's requirement, that's the state code. That's not Mark's requirement, that's the state code.
Well, I didn't, it's just...
Be the same in any town, huh?
Yeah, it's just a, but I didn't think it was, like, it's not, to me, it wasn't a building.
Right.
Building needs a building permit. I didn't utilize a roof as a building. Mark came down and said it was a building, so, right, I didn't know that.
There's a motion on the floor here.
Yeah, we have a motion for Mr. Bombara to continue the public hearing till July 8th. What time?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. And...
Are you looking at me for...
No, I'm just, actually, so are you giving us permission to view the property or not?
Of course I'm giving you permission.
I'm sorry?
Of course I'm giving you permission.
Okay, thank you.
It didn't sound like you were in the beginning.
Do we have, I mean, do you have to go in this direction, is my question?
We always do.
Absolutely.
You know, there's a lot that I could explain, what happens on this board all the time, and you would not believe the stuff that we see.
I'm sure I would.
Okay? So, no, you wouldn't.
I'm sure, I...
Just give us that. It's a canopy over your patio.
It's a canopy over the patio.
Let's go look at it and make a decision.
It doesn't meet zone.
Okay?
It's a canopy over a patio that does not meet zone.
Correct. From an existing structure. So, it was already there. And I thought, from what I read, if it was, if I already had occupied the space, that I wasn't really hurting anything, I guess.
So, would it be wrong of us to ask you to move it two, three, four more feet?
I couldn't do it.
No?
I couldn't do it.
Okay.
And what would it be?
For clarity? She's asking for five feet, and she's already three and a half feet from the lot line. She's not where she's asking.
Right.
You mentioned it from one side, but not the other. You're actually three and a half feet from the property line.
On one edge, yes.
When you have your little lot here...
Yeah. Thanks for pointing that out.
They're going, well, they're going to take this thing, and they call it a building envelope, and you would have this little spot that goes like this, and it goes parallel with the lines. So, if you're five feet here, and you're asked for five feet, this is going to have to be five feet, too.
I see, yeah.
So, that's why I'm just making a point that you're not actually what you're asked for.
Because I'm three?
Yeah.
I'm three all the way?
No, you're closest point.
Closest point.
Closest point, right.
So, the, if the structure is already up, it doesn't even match your application.
Yeah, right.
So, that's the first problem.
And it's been advertised wrong.
Why is it being advertised?
Because you advertise you want to be five feet from the lot line, and you're three, three feet.
I didn't advertise any feet from the lot line, did I?
It's based on your application.
Your application says that.
So, that information is taken and transcribed into a advertisement.
Oh, I see.
See?
So, you're not five feet, you're three and a half. So, when you gave that to Maria, Maria advertised her that application, so it was advertised incorrectly.
Okay. All right, yeah, I must have misunderstood that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Bombara to continue to July 8th at 7:00 PM, and the applicant said she didn't have an issue with people viewing it?
Well, that goes without saying.
Do they view it between now and next month?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mrs. Holmes, to continue the public hearing to July 8th at 7:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye, Dan Heaney?
Aye, John Bombara.
Aye, Louis Tiziano.
Mike, it's Patrick.
Pam Holmes, aye.
Okay.
We're just opposite kind of people, Mike.
I'm just going to let the...
Okay, we'll see you on July 8th, 7:00 PM.
Sorry, it couldn't be done quicker for you. I understand.
Before she leaves...
Buy a big umbrella.
Just so she doesn't come back next month, and we have a problem. How do we address that inaccurate advertisement?
Well, because it's something that you want to think about.
Yeah, well, it says right on the advertisement that they can view the application and so forth at the town hall.
Trying to...
The application's wrong.
Save a step, that if it's, if it needs to be corrected, and we're waiting days, I don't want to wait 30 days to tell her that we've got to correct it.
Is that the guy that's complaining?
No, it's actually the nice guy.
No, oh.
Yeah, Stewie complains about everybody but me. Stewie complains about everybody. Ask the neighbor. He loves us for some reason. Great guy, old plumber.
He should have him come in and say he's okay with it.
So, why don't we rectify this application?
Yeah, how do I fix that? That's a great question.
So, there's a couple of ways. I mean, first, the obvious one is to re-advertise it to your next meeting, and...
Do the mailings?
With the correct number, substitute for the correct number. Really, the person that's at risk is the applicant. So, let's assume for a second that someone was aggrieved by the discrepancy. They would then have an opportunity to appeal that decision on that basis, not on the merits of what was considered.
So, if I don't change it, someone could come back and say, oh, you said five, and it's three?
That's your risk.
That's your risk.
That's my risk. Okay, okay. All right. So, if I...
So, you can, you can think about it and call Maria, talk to Maria tomorrow.
It's hard to communicate right now with all the crazy...
I understand.
So, when you drive by, the roof is definitely a little bit more put up, because it was very, very wobbly.
It's just sticks.
It's just a bunch of really nice, a really bunch of sticks. I put a little decoration up, so it looks like it's sort of...
It's a Polynesian hut.
So, well, if you see the designs, this thing is, like, they, well, they asked me to put so much wood into it that it's way more than I thought it was going to be.
Stability, safety.
Yes, stabilize. Way more than I thought it was going to be.
Sure.
So, just full disclosure, there is, the building is a little bit more...
Full-wound.
Yeah, it just doesn't have a, you know, a full roof on it.
Or a stamp of approval.
Or a stamp of approval.
Our building permit.
If you lock it alone, it probably would have fallen down. It would have fallen down.
Sure.
Right, Mark told me you can't fall down. Mark said you started it illegally, but you can't have it fall down.
Yeah.
So, it is a little bit worn down.
Thank you much.
I'll see you guys, black GMC?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Neighbors all talk, so I'm going to say...
It's going to be plenty of cars down there.
I have a Chevy, dark blue Chevy pickup.
I'm not telling anybody what I've got. All you have to do is look at my license plate.
Black navigation. But you won't see it, because I'm not going down.
Thank you very much, Stewie. Thank you very much.
If you see it at the lodge, you'll buy your lunch.
Yeah. That's it. I'm not going down. Hey, people are people. Things happen.
Oh, goodness gracious.
Thank you, I'm going on.
You're welcome.
Okay.
You missed what? So, 7:30, what time is it?
Oh, yeah.
8:20.
8:20.
Guys have long meetings.
Let's get rid of Tim. I need things here.
All right. Next agenda item is North Brown LLC Comprehensive Permit, North Village Map 117, Apostle 61.
Yeah, it's going to start, Mr. Typley's on the Zoom.
On the Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So, as the board may remember, before the world changed back in March, we were before the board for minor, insignificant change regarding the location of buildings and some of the details of buildings. One of the issues at that meeting was the porch on the Villager 1 units, which are the one-car garage, first-floor master units. They extended another four feet into the parking setback area shown on the plan. And the board indicated at the time that they would like to see all of the, all of the structure, including the porches, be set back from the parking setbacks that are set forth in the plan. So, when we went back after the meeting, we went and looked at the site plan and came to a conclusion it would be very difficult to offer the Villager 1 units going forward to buyers, because there are only, there are limited areas on the site plan where that would be feasible. So, we had a plan done showing two alternative entry provisions for that building. One of them is a recessed entry that's essentially four feet by four feet is within the structure itself, and the other is a side entry porch, which is about four by six feet, and that's on the side of the building. So, we are asking the board to approve those two design changes, and we believe they're insignificant and substantial changes. I think the board has copies of the second letter in the plans.
We do. Yep.
Yep. So, what are you telling us, Ed?
It was our fault.
No, we have two alternative entryways for that Villager 1 building.
He modified the entrances to ease the front setback.
If you're looking at the plan, on the left-hand side is the recessed entry, so the entryway doesn't stick out at all from the structure. And on the right-hand side is a porch on the side. So, the entryway, the entry door is on the side, and the porch is on the side. And again, it doesn't, it would not encroach further into the parking setback area.
I have a couple of questions when it's open.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so, first question is, by moving that to the side, I can appreciate that you got away from the parking setback. How does that affect the side distancing to the building? Does that cause a problem on that?
It is, well, again, depending upon where in the, on the site it would be located, but what we're proposing, which is for units 27 and 28, it wouldn't have any impact. There would still be at least 31 feet, and that would be required. There's still be 31 feet between the structure.
Now, you're calling the structure the building, or the outside of the porch?
Overhang, true.
Outside the porch? Yes? Okay. And the next unit that would be next to this, I'm assuming it's not built yet, Ed? The next duplex that's not built yet, correct?
There is, well, where we would likely use it is, there is a foundation in place.
Right, okay.
But there is not a building, correct?
So, and the only reason I'm asking you that, so if you, on that one there, you have the side entrance porch that comes out on the right-hand side. If the next building in line has it come out on the left-hand side, is that going to create a problem with that 31-foot separation if you...
No, because on that building, you referred to the site plan, there is a substantial area. It's probably...
The only reason I'm asking you this, Ed, is when we were in Phase 1, and we increased the depth of the building by five feet, then we ran into this problem in Phase 2, so I want to make sure that we're not doing the same thing over again.
It would not be a problem. Right now, there would be 119 feet, according to the site plan, between Unit 28 and the next building.
Okay, so is this going to become the new design, Ed?
No.
Or just on this one building?
It will on this, on this building. There are, we may use recess entries on both sides.
Yeah.
If the site required it, or we could put side porches on both if we had enough space between buildings. Or if there was room to set the whole structure back, we could also put the porch in the front and maintain the parking center.
All right, so...
So, there would be basically three alternatives that we would be able to use.
Dan, can I ask a bill of the question?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So, are we looking at this because it's just a design change only?
I believe they're asking for the board's determination that this is not a substantial change from their current permit. So, the permit requires that the units are pretty much indistinguishable one from the other. They're asking you to consider them still indistinguishable with this change. Is that correct, Ed?
Sorry, indistinguishable, and we, the Villager 1 units are distinguishable from the Villager 2 units, okay? Now, but there would be, there would be alternatives on the entryway, on the front facade of the Villager 1 unit, yes?
Okay, maybe this would help me. The, this is just going to be an alternate design, it just happens to be in Phase 2, correct?
In Phase 2, and...
Yeah, wherever you're going to use it. It's just an alternate design that's going to be put into the...
Right, it's an alternate...
So, these are going to be also used in the affordable units?
If the affordable buyers choose a first-floor master or Villager 1...
It'll be offered to them?
Then it would, yes.
Okay, so it'll be offered as an affordable option as well?
Good point, yeah.
Dan, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Pam.
So, from listening to you, it sounds as though you're not sure whether this is going to work on all of your, all of your buildings that you're building. And since the plot plan is already laid out, I guess I'm not, I don't understand why you wouldn't be sure.
Pam, this is in response, when we were before you back in March, you said, well, we want these porch, the porticoes, or the porches, if you will, to also be set back in the parking area. So, that would require further setbacks of the building. So, in order to avoid that, in order to adhere to the site plan, then we're proposing this.
Okay, and just for the record, the only reason that we got involved with this is because there was, you were encroaching on sidewalks in the place with parking, because you added parking in front of those new porches, and you have cars over the sidewalk.
I think he's correcting that with this option.
That's what he is.
Right, yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have another question, and then I'll be quiet.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the, so, bringing up Pam's point about the parking in front of the porch, what is your intention that you have, because you're permitted to have a parking inside the garage and one outside the garage, are you going to put adjacent parking spots, a parking spot, or what is your plan?
It would be the same as it currently is with the Villager 1 units with porches. There would be, the parking, the width of the parking area would be the same.
So, instead of telling me that it would be the same, could you just answer and tell me, is it going to be one parking spot, or is it going to be that eight-foot spot that Tim was saying to get out of his car, which is actually a parking spot?
Yes, it's going to be the additional parking spot.
The same.
So, it'll just go eight feet off the side of the driveway?
Correct.
All right. And I'm only asking that so we don't end up with a paved front all the way down the street, from one to the next. So, it's easy for plowing, but it's unattractive.
Drive on the sidewalk.
But there would be the same amount of grassed area that is on the Villager...
Yeah, I just wanted to address the parking, so we didn't end up with two or three wide parking spots in front of the unit.
No, it's not going to be the same width as existing.
I'm done.
Anybody else have any questions?
I do not. Everything's been answered for me.
I sort of miss these two guys, you know? I hadn't seen them for some...
You shouldn't invite them over.
I missed you, too. I didn't think there'd be room, because we were limited to the number of people.
I'm sure he's, I'm sure he's upset.
No, he's quite happy.
All right, so the question is, is it an insubstantial change, or is it not?
I'll move that the changes in design with putting the entrances on the side, you know, if needed, that we consider them insubstantial.
No, do we have conditions on that?
Sure, go ahead.
On this?
There's a proposed vote in my letter. We want to use that as...
No, that's not what I want to use. I want to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Are we, do we put conditions on this, or is it just you vote yes or no if it's an insubstantial change?
They're asking for a very specific question. They've given you a set of drawings and have asked for your input to determine whether or not it's substantial or insubstantial.
Okay, so based off of that, I couldn't make one if I can't, because I don't have anything that shows me where that parking is. If I can't add it as positive verbiage to the decision, or the opinion, or whatever it is...
I'm sure you could put a condition in there.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the condition such as maintaining the 31 feet in between buildings and one adjacent parking spot to the driveway?
Yes.
Shouldn't it be like automatically?
Nothing's automatic, unfortunately.
So, I have the written motion, Ed.
Tim, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just wanting to clarify what Mike just said. Yeah, I was just wanting to clarify what Mike just said. Did you, you're going to allow the 18-foot wide driveway that we have or you, did you say one parking spot or one additional?
If you, if you have a one-car garage, you have a parking spot in front of it.
Yeah.
If you have a two-car garage, you have two parking spots in front of it and you want to put an additional parking spot adjacent to that driveway, whether it's a one or a two-car garage, correct?
Yes, yes.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I agree.
Because you had put that extra 8 feet to get out of your car in front of the porch?
Yes, in case you need to.
Okay.
Yes.
But that's really a parking spot?
Yes.
Okay. I'm glad you admitted that. It took me a few times, but I got you to admit it.
So you're okay with that, you know?
I don't have a problem at all with that. I just want clarity to make sure that we know what the rules are, because the original agreement said that you were allowed one parking spot inside and one parking spot outside.
Yes.
Now we have two-car garages that have two inside and two outside, and then we had an additional clearance of 8 feet so you could get out of your car. So I just want to make sure we have clarity as to what the parking spots are going to be, that's all.
So the total width of that pavement will be?
I think it's 18 feet.
18 feet.
That's off the top of my head.
Well, if it's 18 feet with a two-car garage plus another 8 feet, that's 26 feet.
No, it's not that, we're not.
Okay, so you, so the width, the maximum width of the garage and the driveway?
All the driveways meet the two-car garage, which I think is 18 feet.
Okay. So that'll be the condition, that the maximum width of the pavement will be 18 feet in front of the unit? And maintaining the 31 feet in between the building minimum size?
Right.
And the structure is to the porch?
You got it. I'm done.
Is that a motion?
All right, the motion here.
Okay.
Ed, Ed wrote the motion. So.
Ed guy.
Right, so I'll make a motion. The zoning board of appeals determine under 760 CMR 56.05 parentheses 11, that the additional proposed entryway with modifications as set forth applicant North Brown LLC's June 2, 2020 project modification and its attached plans, Ed, this is awfully wordy, are insubstantial in nature within the meaning of 760 CMR 56.07 parentheses 4, because there will be no increase in building height and no increase in number of units, no reduction in size of the site, and no change in building type from garden apartment to townhouse or high-rise, or change in housing tenure, ownership to rental and to allow a revision to the approved plan for the comprehensive permit as shown on plans attached here too.
And with the conditions previous?
With conditions previously mentioned by Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Do you want to repeat it?
Sure.
That the paved area in front of the units will not exceed 18, 18 feet in width, that the separation of the structures from one structure to the next will maintain a minimum of 31 feet, and the structure is defined to the end of the porch, not to the side of the building. The cupboard porch.
Or the deck or any of them. I don't want to limit it to porch.
Yeah.
Because there's some.
Or anything.
Other ones and stuff like that.
Hey, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes. If a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, John Bombara.
Aye, Louis Tiziano.
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
Pam Holmes, aye.
So we're all set with that, Tim?
See, that was easy, Ed.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
You should probably stay home more often, Ed.
I didn't say it.
Oh, what about the cistern?
I put the stuff in there for the cistern to, like you know, that things are progressing with the cistern. I would like to get that issue wrapped up. I'm sure Ed would too.
No.
I would, yeah. We're, we're speaking with Jay. A lot of work has, has been communicating with him, so we hope to have it wrapped up, but I think within the next couple of days.
That'd be great. I'd like to finish with Stan Tech, close that contract out, we'll be done with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Can I say something, please, before they?
Go ahead.
Do you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
If you just make sure that building permit's already been issued, can you make sure they amend that building permit and deep revise plans?
Right.
Foundation that you have been?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because I see a foundation out built at that time, whether you can achieve that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. The next item was, for discussion was zoning board of appeals expense request for funds to go to the general fund?
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to.
Copy that.
Look at it and look in, but you have a budget of $3,400, I believe, around $3,400.
So the fiscal year is coming to an end and in light of the COVID-19.
Yeah.
Matter, the administration has requested that any boards that have, departments and committees that have some surplus funds that they haven't expended or don't plan to expend to allow that to be transferred toward usage for the administration.
Okay, and the fiscal year is the end of June, right?
Correct.
Right.
Question?
Go ahead, Mike.
How much money have we expended over the years since it's at the end of the year?
Maria, just that you didn't get a chance to look.
Well, we haven't spent anything this year.
Oh, okay.
I hate to say that. But over the years, it's been minimal. You'll buy me a file cabinet or something like that.
New chairs.
Legal notices anymore.
New chairs.
No, no chairs.
No, new chairs.
Well, we went through a similar thing with building the facilities a couple of years ago, and I asked the question that if we needed something, would we get it? And we would get it if we actually, like a file cabinet or whatever. So why are we keeping excess money in a budget that we don't really use?
Yeah.
It's just, if you're going to need something, the town's going to come up with.
I can, I can get you a report that shows, you know, what we've spent over the past number of years and kind of that.
Right.
So you can make a better decision.
Yeah.
Because we had some education expenses in the past.
Right.
Right.
So.
Now we're just going.
We're probably just putting the John's by different education.
The town doesn't want to throw away money.
It's just that, I mean, with regard to budget, I mean, you need to have a budget with something in it, because otherwise you don't get to expend it.
You're rid of the whole thing, but.
Yeah. Lower.
If we use it $1,000, what do we have, $30,000?
Bill will get us a review. That'll be good.
Just, just to tighten it up a little bit, looking to see where they can grab pennies from, so if we just have it laid there.
Well, we have used more in the past. At one point, we contributed to a printer, some other things, so.
We shut down the chairs.
Yep. Okay, so we should probably take a vote to return that unused money to the general fund?
Second, our motion has moved.
So you want to return all of it or?
Should we, should we leave?
Paying a couple hundred dollars?
I mean, I.
500 reasonably?
Leave 500.
Okay.
I would say you probably want to retain some portion.
Okay.
You never know what might come.
Right, right. Okay, so we have a motion to return all the used funds except $500?
$500.
Okay. Is that your motion, John?
No, that was Mike's.
That was mine.
All right.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Bombara, to return any unused funds except $500 to the general fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, John Bombara.
Aye, Louis Tiziano.
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
Aye, Pam Holmes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. The next item for discussion is, we had an application from a fellow at 275 Main Street, and he was going to apply for a variance, and he paid Maria all the fees but decided against applying. So he's looking to get his application fees, and we had no expenses that cost a little bit of time, Maria's time.
Yeah.
But he.
She donated it.
Yeah.
She told me.
I did.
Okay, so.
I'll move that we return the fees to Mr.?
I don't know how to pronounce it.
Michael Isaac.
Michael Isaac.
Michael Isaac, okay. We have a motion by Mrs. Holmes?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bombara to return the application fees to Tom, what is it?
Michael Isaac.
Michael Isaac, 275 Main Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, John Bombara.
Aye, Louis Tiziano.
Pam Holmes.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Pam Holmes, aye.
All right, so you'll take care of that, Maria?
Yes, I will.
All right, and then I, I didn't see any information about the scenic road. Was there anything in the packet?
I've got them here.
Oh, okay.
Files.
All right.
I don't know. Do you want me to give them all to you, Dan?
Well, technically, you know, I mean, certainly welcome to, technically you don't have to respond on number 3 and number 4. Number 5 you do, because it's written in our local bylaws that you have to provide input to the planning board. Otherwise, they can't. What was that hearing?
Oh.
Okay, so.
Okay, is there anywhere online that we can find this information?
For number 5?
For all of them.
Certainly, Maria has the files here. If you want to take a look at them, you're certainly welcome to.
That's why I brought them.
I'm just letting the board know that.
Boy, does that make it tough.
Number 3 and 4, you really, there's not an obligation for you to comment on.
Okay.
Number 5, it's in our local zoning.
Are you familiar with?
All right.
Site plan review. Thank you.
Are you familiar with what number 3 is?
3 is a scenic road. I think it's a residential dwelling. They're going to open the wall up on Orange Street, and I don't know if it includes hating trees down or?
No, just cutting a branch off.
Okay, so.
For driveway?
For driveway opening.
Yes.
Number 4, that's a?
Number 4 is, we currently have an approved subdivision where the location of the Wallem Lake Solar Farm is proposed. It's called Lakewood Estates, the subdivision that was permitted probably six or 10 years ago. And they, as part of the subdivision, they posted a no-build covenant on all of the lots within the subdivision. So technically, they can't get a building permit for the solar array. So they have to rescind the approval of the subdivision, 22 lots or something in that order. And therefore, the, it should be a pretty straight procedural event with the planning board, I think. They're going to rescind the approval, and then they'll be able to proceed with the solar.
Excuse me, but I don't know what's going on there. I mean, they're going to put that solar farm in, hey, they're going to do it. Everybody wants it, that's their business. But they got a road out of that forest. When the, when they had a thing approved, when it was to be housing, they're not supposed to go on Shore Road, okay? And not to get into that, but they're not supposed to go into Shore Road. But anyways, the court came back and said that I was wrong, okay? That now they can go into Shore Road. Well, as far as we're concerned, you know, the court was wrong, the court was wrong by saying that. So we appealed it, okay? And now they can't, now it, you know, if we win it, okay, they're stuck with that land, and they got no way to come out of it. Now, what happens then? You know what I'm saying?
So we're just looking at number 4 to see if we have objection to it?
Number 4 is providing, again, technically, it shouldn't be on your agenda. I mean, I'm not opposed to you, you know, providing input to the board, obviously, but there's no obligation for you to provide input on this.
Louis' concerns could be taken up with the planning board.
Yes, definitely, definitely.
Yep, the hearing's going to be tomorrow night, absolutely.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, I gotta, I gotta go, but.
We'll be there anyway.
Yeah, but the whole trouble is that they're just getting, you know, I mean, just wait till that, like that other thing came back, and they said, you know, I wasn't Malinski's. Now, now it looks like he may have a problem, because the court came back in my favor.
How do I get into this?
Yeah, it's nothing to do with this.
Can we, so number 5, what's that? That's like going a lot on my?
I don't know. All in favor? Number 5 is required by our local bylaws.
Louis, are you building a pot place?
Me? Yes.
GBI?
Yeah, we're building it. We're just doing the building at that time.
Oh.
We saw him the land.
So. So I'm not sure if you have that file, Marie?
I've got it. Pam, she just passed it.
So our local bylaw, the planning board cannot close the hearing within 35 days of opening it until the various number of boards and departments provide input. If they don't provide input, we have to wait the full 35 days, okay? So the project is a most retail establishment at the corner of Monroe and Davis. I think the plan's circulating around, perhaps?
Yeah, yeah.
If anybody wants to take a look. And then we'll take your input and revive to the planning board so we can actually put that net worth next to that regulation bylaw requirement.
Watch those are in.
Hey, they were in the 70s. Used to be out of somebody's backseat of a car.
Cardinal Street.
They only had a few flavors back then.
Back then, high school.
They only had a few flavors back then. That's a good one, Panama.
One year in Milford, I held the, I made 78 arrests for pot. Man, now we used to chase pot. 78 arrests, and one guy beat me. He wasn't chief then, but Liberto, he just died. He got 79.
Sniffed him out, did he?
Huh?
You sniffed him out.
You know, you can't get them all, you know? But the stuff was crazy then, remember?
Mm-hmm.
It was crazy.
This doesn't smell like it's got any alcohol in it.
One of the, they only seen a lot of news this morning. One of the manufacturers making gin mislabeled the bottle, and they sold gin when hand sanitized.
Oh, yeah, so.
Well, they're mixing products with the alcohol.
Some of that stuff could be hand sanitized.
Same company, same, same companies are making it.
Yeah, they are. It's a little, one barrel for this one, and, okay, easy to do.
What information, just see for?
Yeah, I know.
For a couple minutes.
I've been kind of following this.
Oh, I haven't seen it.
I have. It's going, there's going to be a lot of park stores around Massachusetts or Rhode Island.
Is this recreational or medicinal?
Recreation, I think.
Yeah.
I don't have too much.
So you can buy brownies down the street?
Well, you can sell them there, I just, I would imagine.
Yeah, but are the brownies? I don't know.
I don't.
I didn't, I didn't have a chance.
Probably gumdrops would be, I guess. Little jelly things. I have no idea.
The last, the last item was.
A lot of people enjoy it.
Approved the minutes, but I haven't had a chance to read them on it or what anybody?
I did.
Next meeting?
You did.
Okay.
We put off to?
I, I did. They sounded okay, except for the last one, that there was something weird. What was it? Just didn't sound. Where was it?
Yeah, Bill, that meeting's tomorrow night, right?
Yep. It's great, let's move.
Hey.
How big is that door?
Oh, I don't know. We got the plan.
Yeah, it's not big.
Yeah, we're not going to find it.
So why don't we then do the minutes?
We could wait, if you want to. I just, you know.
I, I just haven't read them, to be honest with you.
Jim should be reading.
Email me with that correction so I can send it to Mary.
I'll look at, I'll look back. I focused on it. Mary's going to be with us until September, right?
Yes.
And then you're doing the, Maria?
Yeah, yeah, right. Oh, my God.
What's happening?
Nobody can fill the news, that's for sure.
Who did?
Mary.
Does the minutes? Does a good job.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
She does a great job.
We're going to miss her.
Where's she going?
I don't know.
她说, "Better and better things." She's going to advance herself.[1721.76]